Good evening. This time, if you would, please silence your cellphones if you haven't already. And be advised, these proceedings are being recorded. If you desire to address the City Council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak forum available at the entrance and present it to the city clerk. Speakers will be called upon at the appropriate time. This time, I will call to order the City Council meeting for the City of Grand Terrace for February 12th, 2019. Our invocation tonight will be given by Pastor Daniel Lee of the Grandview Baptist Church, and our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Chief Wooters of the San Bernardino County Fire Department. If you would, please stand for invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you, God, that at this time, Lord, we just come before you humbly, understanding, Lord, that all authority of heaven and earth is in your hands. And, God, that each and every single one of us just understands, Lord, that each seat that we are sitting in has been appointed by you way before our own existence, but planned by your perfect wisdom, by your love for each and every one of your creation. And, Lord, we just come before you in need of your plan, of your insight, for our town and our community. Lord, be with each member that has come before here, Lord, whether they are in an appointed seat or that they are just a loving member of this community. That we speak, Lord, before you and all authority that you have given and blessed each and every one of us. God, in the needs of this town, the needs of our people, may we put forth your love and loving our neighbors always before everything else. May we humble ourselves to understand, God, that we not only serve this community, but that we serve you. Continue to do your great works, continue to have your plan and your teachings always just living in us. Thank you, God, and in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Pastor Daniel Lee, thank you Chief Wooters. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen.
Here.
Councilmember Hussey.
Present.
Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Mayor Protem Wilson.
I'm here.
Mayor McNaboe.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We have no special presentations tonight, so we'll move to our consent calendar. Consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial, and they will be acted upon by the City Council at one time without discussion. However, any council member, staff member, or citizen may request an item of the consent calendar be removed for discussion. Are there any such requests at this time?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to poll five and six.
Okay. Any others? Do I have a motion for the balance? I move the balance of the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Robles, second by Councilmember Hussey. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNaboe voting yes.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Allen, item number five, check register.
So, on, thank you, Madam Mayor, on packet page forty-five, at the chart at the top, the San Bernardino Valley Water, San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District, the description is the settlement and release payment number eight for two-hundred-forty-two thousand four-hundred-three. It's not something that I'm familiar with. I know a little bit about it, but my main question I'm wondering about is how much longer we've got with this and what it's, you know, why are we paying this back to San Bernardino Valley Water District?
Director Fortune? Oh, excuse me, yeah. Assistant Manager Fortune.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, City Council. Councilmember Allen, that payment is made to, as you said, to the San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District. When redevelopment was still alive, we had several taxing entities, one of which was the Water District. They were entitled to their share of the property tax increment. Prior to dissolution, the former staff mistakenly kept their portion of that taxing, and it amounted to a little over $2 million. This, when they had finally settled, the settlement agreement was to pay it over a course of ten years. This is year seven. We have roughly three, three more years to go. However, this is all paid out of the successor agency's obligations. So this is an obligation that is listed on our required obligation payment schedule.
Okay, so nothing out of general fund?
No, no. This is not a general fund obligation.
Okay. And the other item that I was, was the next one down on the list, the delinquent trash collections for a little over $38,000. Is that an annual payment or a monthly payment or a quarterly?
It's, I would like to say either quarterly or semi-annually. These delinquent trash collections are actually collected by the county. These are collections that are now put on the property tax, collected by the county, they give it to us, and then we give it to BRTech. So this is not, actually, it is not an expense, it's a transfer of revenues collected by the county that should go to BRTech.
Who's, I mean, not by name or anything, but the delinquent part, who's, who's being delinquent? Is this property owners?
Yes, property owners, so commercial, commercial or residential.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions on the check register?
I do not.
Okay. Would you like to, motion to approve?
I do make a motion to approve items five and six of the check register, Madam Mayor.
Oh, okay. You didn't want item six of the monthly financial report polled as well?
Oh, I thought I said that. Item five, and that also, item six.
Okay, so you're, so you don't have any more questions on item six?
No, I do not.
Okay. So, Councilmember Allen motions approval of items five and six.
Second.
There's a second by Mayor Protem Wilson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNaboe voting yes.
Okay, thank you. Move to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not appearing on our regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the City Council may not discuss or act on an item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. Items may also have a response from staff, and items may also be requested to come back at a future meeting. Are there any requests to speak during this time? Thank you.
Jeffrey McConnell, Wallen Avenue, Grand Terrace. Last council meeting, I came up here during public comment, and I brought up two items, and one of them was the survey which was discussed, and two council members agreed to put it on the future agenda. Thank you very much. The other item was, seemed to have been totally ignored, so I'm bringing it up again, the request to have the prioritization workshop come up in the near future. So hopefully we can discuss that later on or in the evening, or if two members of the council would like to see that on the agenda, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Any other requests to speak at this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll close public comment and come back to council for their communications. We'll begin with Councilmember Jeff Allen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There it is. Since the last council meeting, I've received correspondence from two Grand Terrace residents regarding unrelated issues in our city, and I wanted to thank those two residents for contacting me about, with their concerns. It's really a good feeling when the residents engage with their elected representatives and make us work for your interests, and I encourage all our residents to reach out to us because you're our boss, and I want you to know that we take and I take your concerns seriously. So whether it's by email, or snail mail, or a text message, or a phone call, it's always good to know that there are residents out there who care about their city and are willing to engage with their elected officials. And I also wanted to say that I think Councilmember Hussey's idea, that he came up with a couple of meetings ago about fair market rent value for our fire station, is certainly worth exploring, and I support that wholeheartedly. So I also agree with Councilmember Robles and Hussey's, who have both stated in previous meetings that they believe it's time for another, what should I call it, workshop retreat, something like that. And here's why. Since, since our last council meeting, I attended the League of City, California Cities Division Meeting on January twenty-four, and at that meeting, we discussed some legislative updates to the 2019 legislative session. There are eighteen different, right now, there are about eighteen different housing bills that have been introduced that are written to address the affordable housing issue by streamlining the process for the development of affordable housing units. Most, if not all, of these bills will have an impact on future development here in Grand Terrace. Some of the governor's budget and policy proposals are like SB one, which will withhold transportation funds from cities not meeting these requirements. There's the Article thirty-four repeal, which is on the ballot this, or on the table of this legislative session, and that would eliminate the voter requirements for the issuance of bonds and would support streamlining of sequin review process. So the governor's serious. I mean, he sued the City of Huntington Beach over this, and so if he'll sue them, I don't, you know, I don't want to think what, what happened to us. So there are quite a few bills and quite a few smart guys in Sacramento who think they've got wonderful ideas on how to address the affordable housing crisis. Not to mention this repeal of Article thirty-four, you know, which would give no more voter control. They have bills on there that would penalize cities for not meeting their rehens, and so that's one of the reasons why I thought it might be a good idea for us to come together, and since we know what's ahead of us, what's coming up, because they've already stated that they're going to raise the numbers, arena numbers, and so if we know what's ahead, we can get ahead of the power curve that Sacramento is going to put out in front of us. You know, think outside the box, come up with some potential solutions, you know, and here's, here's a wild and crazy idea that I'll think outside the box. Why don't we zone Cage Park, high-density residential? I'd a lot rather see housing in there, a nice apartment building, than a trucking company driving forty trucks an hour out of that place. So I'm just thinking outside the box. We had, another presentation we had, and I think this would be really great for our city, is, was from the Ontario Ranch Kukamunga Fire Department and Sheriff's Department, and they talked about the Stop the Bleed program. This is a program where they have trauma, Stop the Bleeding Trauma Kits, co-located with AEDs in every classroom in every school in Ontario in Ranch Kukamunga, and I think that is an accomplishment that's worth applauding because after listening to their presentation, one comes to the realization that the first responders are not wearing uniforms. The first responders are the survivors because people bleed out in less time than it takes the first responder to arrive, and the first responder is not going to stop the bleeding, the first responder's there to stop the shooting. And if you're a teacher in a school, are you the one that's going to send Johnny to the nurse's station while there's a shooting going on to get the trauma kit? So they took it upon themselves to train all the kids they could and all the teachers they could and get these blood control and trauma kits installed in all the rooms and in all the public buildings, and I think that is a goal that is, would be wise for us to take on ourselves because one does not know, one cannot sit here in this day and age and say, oh, we're too, nobody knows or cares about us, you know, not here, not now. I was fortunate enough to be able to attend the California League of Cities New Council Members Training Academy. I learned a lot about legislation, ethics, communications, so much so that it would take me the rest of the night to tell you everything that I learned there, but the couple of the highlights, the most important points that I took away from there is, and they continue to drive this home, is never, ever, ever, ever forget the Brown Act, and if you ever have a question, just ask the attorney. They have all the answers. So I attended the OmniTrans board meeting and the SBCTA board meeting a few days ago, first time, and even though I'm not a delegate or even an alternate, I would like to be someday, and so I attended so that I could learn about it, so I'd be ready to step up if called on. I was down at Woody's a couple of mornings ago with Coffee with the Cop, and that was a great event. We had a great turnout there. I was glad to see as many law enforcement that was, that was there and as many residents was there, and I would like to see Woody have to use, I mean, Mike have to use the bigger meeting room, you know, next time. It was a great event, and I got a chance to talk with Specialist Beasley and Lieutenant Wolf about a program that's important for me, and that's our COP program, and I'd like to see our city be able to work with Lieutenant Wolf, Specialist Beasley, and try to grow that program in our city because I believe that a robust COP program would assuage residents' concerns and also help us with our, you know, our crime control. In closing, I just wanted to give you a little FYI about our, our local area here. I'm the chairman of the Veterans Advisory Committee to the San Bernardino County Board of Supervisors. I have been for many years, and we have a bi-monthly meeting that discusses issues concerning veterans and their families that the Board of Supes can address. And I just wanted to give you this one statistic, if you're a veteran out there listening to me right now, or if you're in the audience here. San Bernardino County's veteran population is number five of all the counties in the state, about number five, sometimes it goes to number six in, in population size. We have less than fifty percent of the number of veterans that LA County has, and we have about fifty percent of what San Diego County has. However, San Bernardino County Veterans Affairs, Department of Veterans Affairs Office, they're so good at taking care of our county's veterans that San Bernardino County receives more federal dollars through veterans' claims received than any other county in the state, and it's in the tens of millions of dollars that they're number one. So if you're a veteran out there or a veteran family member, reach out to them because they can help you also with that. And with that, I'll close and say thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Bill Hussey.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. Mr. Duffy, did you hear that overhead request?
I saw the PowerPoint slide yesterday for, to be added. It wasn't added, I'm sorry, it wasn't added, sir.
All right, well, there is a PowerPoint slide. We had Coffee with the Cop, and it was a great turnout, and I had one picture, I don't know if everybody knows, that Grand Terrace Rocks thing where people could find rocks. Well, I found Waldo at Woody's, so I guess Waldo's been missing for a week and a half, so. We had Lieutenant Wolf, Mr. Duffy, and Jonathan Gallo hold it, and so after further questioning, Lieutenant Wolf released Waldo, and he went back to his planner over there, so, but anyway, I just wanted to show a picture of that, but give some highlight here, some fun humor, but it's a great turnout. I was blessed to say the prayer for the officers, you know, because bless are the peacemakers, and, and, you know, like I said, my son, he was a San Bernardino County Sheriff, now he works for Riverside PD, but he's two years whatsoever, Deo County Sheriff, prepared him for Riverside PD, and, you know, all he wants to do is go home after his shift to be with his family, just like all these other officers do. They want to go home. All first responders, too, they just want to do their shift, be their brothers and sisters, and then go home to their loved ones, so. My prayers are with you guys daily, and hopefully we could, we get better, but, you know, it's, it's tough out there, and I just worry about you guys, but I want to thank everybody who came out for Coffee with the Cop and supporting the Sheriff's Department. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussey. Councilmember Sylvia Robles.
Well, since I'm now an alternate, in my spirit of sharing committee assignments, I have nothing to report.
All right. Well, thank you, Councilmember Robles. Mayor Protem, Doug Wilson.
Just a short bit, Mayor, thank you. I appreciate everybody being here tonight. I just wanted to add one comment to what Councilmember Jeff Allen said. I, I think it is, I think it is good that we have some programs and some more focus on the homeless condition. I've, you know, been outspoken in relation to that, but until the government, and I guess I want to say the government, state or federal government, local government doesn't, is not in the position to be able to do this, gets realistic about their programs, their timing, and the amount of money that's involved in order to be able to do these things, been in construction for forty-six, forty-seven years. I've rarely seen a situation where a program will actually fit into the timing or the money that makes it affordable to build a project. Usually what it is, is a requirement that is twenty percent affordable can be slapped on a project, and that twenty percent affordable program does not really fit the key when it comes to affordable housing for, in general. The median income used to be, and I'm not a hundred percent sure, but the low, low median income was somewhere in the direction of $16,000 a year. And when you're talking about $16,000 a year income and trying to fit yourself into a, you and your family into a housing program, that's tough. But what's really tough is, is when the developer tries to justify how you make the, make the project pencil. I've sat down with more than one developer and tried to pencil situations like that, even into mobile homes and RV parks and anything else like it, and bottom line is, the numbers just don't work. So in order for us to be able to do this, we're going to have to come up with some real meat and potatoes mechanisms to be able to make it work. But I think it's great that we're taking little pieces and parts at a time, just as long as we don't give it more credence than what really it serves. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. On behalf of the city, I attended a few meetings. One of them was the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority. I, I'm part of the executive committee. We had a regular monthly meeting, but we had an additional meeting in January, and that was to look at the formation of what is called a wholly-owned or captive insurance company. And not to go into too much detail, but what we did is we looked at the merits of doing that. Its primary purpose is to ensure the risk of a parent entity, so the Joint Powers Insurance Authority would be the parent entity. It's established to meet risk management and risk financing needs of the parent entity, and the reasons for doing it ultimately that we care about is it reduces costs for the coverage of its members. So this is a way that our insurance pool is looking at finding ways to provide coverage at a reduced rate for all of its members, also to decrease dependence on commercial insurance market, which again helps to decrease the rate and to use capital more efficiently. So the executive committee has, has asked the staff to move forward with forming that captive insurance company. On February sixth, I attended OmniTrans, and just to give a highlight, in May of 2018, and Mayor, Councilmember Robles, you probably remember this, they had a financial white paper that showed, beginning in FY twenty-one, OmniTrans will begin to face an operating budget deficit, and this has been further compounded by a capital deficit that they are experiencing due to a newly enacted electric bus regulation. And so, as part of the discussions you had when you were on the board, Councilmember Robles, they will be creating a joint SBCTA OmniTrans Board Ad-Hoc Committee to provide policy guidance related to funding allocations and project delivery, and they'll look at reviewing the future operational capital requirements, the future of the West Valley Connector Project, and reaffirming the role of OmniTrans in the Valleywide multimodal transportation network. We also authorized OmniTrans to move forward with developing a microtransit strategy. What this does is this allows them to look at very, varied means of providing transportation to areas that don't generally fill a whole bus full of people. So you see these large forty-foot buses going down the street with two people in them, and they have routes where those buses are full, but they also have routes where they just don't have much ridership. And so they are going forward with a way of looking at more of an on-demand, technology-enabled service that they can provide in those areas where they don't have a lot of ridership. On February sixth, I also attended a SBCTA board meeting. We, we did approve appointments to an independent taxpayer oversight committee. They are the committee that looks at how SBCTA is spending Measure I funds. There have been two vacancies that they've had a hard time filling, so they haven't been meeting, and the, the idea behind these positions on this taxpayer oversight committee is they have to have certain technical backgrounds so that they truly understand the, the projects that are being enacted and worked on by SBCTA. So they've, they finally have, have had two members, Gary Newcomb and Rick Gomez, who meet the background requirements, and they have been appointed, so they will be able to be able to meet and review the Measure I funding. Interstate ten corridor contract one, the board gave approval to authorize the executive director to give a notice to proceed. This is the second notice to proceed while they are waiting for federal funding. They approved the amendment to the nineteen-twenty legislative state platform. This platform amendment came about because the Southern California area governments, or SCAG, have determined that they want to enact a revenue measure for environmental programs, and this would be a multi-county measure, and there would be no guarantee that any of the money raised during this revenue, when, when I say revenue measure, I mean tax. There'd be no guarantee in this revenue measure that money's collected in San Bernardino County would stay in San Bernardino County, and so the change to the platform is that they are opposed to any efforts to pass any legislation to authorize a multi-county revenue measure for environmental programs. And lastly, in order to switch traffic to the new south side of the bridge, adjustments are necessary to elevate Barton Road to connect to the new height of the bridge, and so many of you have probably noticed that they have closed the southbound access on La Crosse to the I-215. That started on Monday, February eleventh, and it will last ten days, but they will be changing the traffic over to the new side of the bridge, which means they will be able to work on the old side of the bridge that will be coming down. And that was the last thing that I have to share, so we will move on to item seven of our agenda, which I know a number of you are here for this particular one. This is an appointment of the Planning Commission member to fill our Planning Commission vacancy. Deborah Thomas, City Clerk.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of council, Deborah Thomas, City Clerk. Before you tonight is a staff report appointing a planning commissioner to fill the vacancy that was left by former Planning Commissioner Jeff Allen. Back in 2018, Councilmember Jeff Allen successfully ran for a seat on the City Council and therefore left a vacancy on our planning commission. That particular vacancy's term ends June thirtieth of 2022. In December, the City Council directed the city clerk's office to advertise for the vacancy, and we published it in our local newspaper, our website, and posted it here in the kiosk on premises. We did receive six applications. However, we did receive, a little after 5:00 PM this evening, a withdrawal from Jeremy Rivera. He has chosen not to submit his application at this time. Therefore, staff recommends that the City Council conduct the interviews and appoint an applicant to the planning commission, and Mayor has some instructions at the dais, as well as the questions are before each one of you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Any questions, Jeff? All right, the way that we will conduct The way that we will conduct this is that council will pull names out so that we have an order of applicants and how they will be interviewed. The first applicant to be interviewed will remain in the chambers, and the remaining applicants will go to the community room and wait for Director Molina to escort the next applicant in order. Those applicants who have already been interviewed may remain in the chambers. There will be six questions to be asked of each applicant. The council will choose among themselves which questions each will ask. The time allowed each applicant to respond will be as follows. There will be a minute allotted for introductory statement, two minutes for each council question, and one minute for the applicant closing statement. Upon completion of the applicant interviews, the council will move to appoint a new planning commissioner. So we will begin with...
Madam Mayor, just, just one caveat. We have Cynthia Fortune, who's going to be going into the community room with the applicants, and she will assist with escorting them.
So it will be Cynthia Fortune and Sandra Molina?
Correct.
Okay. So Mayor Protem, will you pull a name, please? What name do you have there?
Mayor Protem? Oh, Jeremy Briggs.
All right. So Jeremy Briggs will be our first interview. Councilmember Robles, please pull number two. Brian Phelps will be our second interview. Councilmember Hussey, will you draw, please? David Allenes? David Allenes will be our third. Councilmember Allen?
Rick Duarte.
Rick Duarte will be our fourth. And that leaves, I'll make sure that there's a name on this one, Ken Stewart will be our fifth. Okay. Now, as for the questions, Mayor Protem, which question would you like to ask?
I'd like to number one, if I can.
Okay. Councilmember Robles, which question would you like? Councilmember Hussey? Councilmember Allen? I will ask question number, number two. And that leaves us with an extra question. So we're going to go with five. We're going to go with five questions, not six, plus the minute for the introductory statement and the, and the minute for an applicant closing statement. Okay. So we've chosen our questions, and I will ask at this time that the applicants be escorted to the community room. Congratulations on coming forward, and I appreciate all of your time in wanting to be part of the planning commission. Thank you so much. All right, Mr. Briggs, if you would please come forward. And as we begin, we will ask you for an introductory statement to tell us about yourself.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor. Good evening, members of council and neighborhood. My name is Jeremy Briggs. I have grown up down the street in High Grove. I've always known as Grand Terrace as a community that I look forward to. It's always been beautiful. Like I said, I've been at every council meeting for the last probably few months now. I moved into this town back in two thousand and twelve with my youngest daughter, B N TK, kindergarten, because I knew, growing up, I always wanted, if I had kids, I was going to come to Grand Terrace, live here, raise my kids here, and be a part of this community. I've been lucky enough to be a part of the Board of Directors for the Grand Terrace Community Basketball League for the last four years, serving as their vice president and their community liaison. I just got voted in this last couple of weeks as the community liaison for the Grand Terrace Little League, and I plan on doing big things with them as well. Yes, the youth sports is a great introduction to community support and community work, but I'm looking at a bigger scale than just youth sports. I believe the planning commission can open the doors to bigger things for myself, what I bring to the table, my diversity, my age, I talk for my generation, and I just want to be a voice for what this city is coming into and what this city can be.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Briggs. So we'll start with the question from Mayor Protem Wilson.
Thanks, Jeremy. Please explain your interest in serving on the planning commission and how your background will benefit the commission and the community.
Yes, sir. My background, I have over fifteen years of management experience. The last twelve has been in transportation with the focus on towing. I have been involved with several Board of Directors. I have served as a Board of Director for the California Tow Truck Association. I have been in Sacramento lobbying with the California Apartment Association, which gave me a lot of knowledge to multifamily housing, the benefits and the not-so-much benefits of bad development and bad rental, what they call bad management. I just know what, what I bring is hard work, dedication. I want to see nothing but the best for this community, the quality of life to continue, the enrichment, best, the best buildings that we can have here, the best businesses that want to come be here, keep the vitalization that we have going currently. And I know is, my role as the planning commissioner is to make the best decisions to ensure the enrichment and quality of life for this city.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Briggs. Councilmember Robles, we'll have the next question?
If an applicant were to contact you directly and request a one-on-one meeting about their project, how would you handle it?
Yes, ma'am. How I'd handle this very simply, I would, I mean, of course, I'm not going to turn anyone away directly, but I will advise that applicant that they do need to take it up with the planning department at City Hall. Anything discussion can be advised in the planning commission meeting and not be using a one-on-one meeting forum. It would most likely need to be, it would need to be brought up in front of the planning commission, or take it to the planning director at City Hall is the way I would advise that situation. I would not allow a one-on-one meeting with that applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs. Miss, Councilmember Hussey, has your next question?
Hello, Jeremy. Please identify what you think are some of the key development issues facing Grand Terrace in the next five to ten years.
Yes, sir. I would say some of the key developments we have here in the next five to ten years is keeping the quality of life for us here, making sure we maintain clean development, good businesses, not allowing any outside influences, changing the feel and atmosphere of this town. I also believe some of the challenges would be keeping up with the technology, keeping up with the times. We are a city full of families, young children. I have three young daughters myself, so I know I want to make sure I am here to make decisions for their future, their kids' future. I want to make sure my kids want to raise their kids in this town. I don't want to just leave, I want to make sure I leave an impression for my daughters, for their friends, for my family members, for the kids that I grew up with that are raising their children in this town and plan for the same thing. But agreeing to future development, working with existing resources, is vital for the financial success of the city. Transportation and public works as well is vital for the continuation success for the city.
Thank you. And Councilmember Allen has your next question?
Hey, Mr. Briggs. Do you feel, as a citizen of the community, that you are able to provide objective recommendations on various land use applications and other issues? And what will you use as your guide in decision-making?
Yes, sir. I would say I do have, what I would use for my decision-making is due diligence, asking all the right questions, doing my own research, making sure everything is the best for this community, making sure it's, you know, it's going to make an imprint on this city long-term. It's nothing that's just going to be, it's quick money, it's, let's do it now because it's the best for right now. I want to do, I want to see everything in long-term goals. I believe, I want my, like I said, I want my daughters to grow up in this city knowing that, I could say I drove through town with my daughters saying, hey, I had a decision on this, I had a decision on that, you know, this is because we fought for this, you know, we didn't just let anybody come into the city. I, I know what it's like growing up in a town where they just let any business or anybody throw anything on the walls, and it's not where I want my kids to grow up, and I don't want my friends that I grew up with that are here with us now, growing up as well.
Thanks.
All right. My question, as a planning commissioner, what is your role in implementing the city's 2030 Vision Plan?
As my role as the 2030, for the 2030 Mission Plan as a commissioner would be the same as the answers before, is maintaining the quality of life for the city, maintaining, you know, clean development, maintaining a place that's going to be the best for the future, for the next generations is where I see it. It, it all comes down for the 2030 Vision is I want to be a part of that all the way through, the 2030, you know, it's 2020 now. Like I said, I'm going to be here for the long term. I, I know most of the generation here now in the city is, is my age, you know, I see it every day when I go pick up my daughters at school, you know, it's, we're not just a retirement community. We used to think about this place twenty years ago. This is a full family town, and this is what I'll do to make sure it stays with these values and key elements that brings this to small-town feel, but with the same keeping up with the times aspect that I can bring.
Okay. Thank you. If you would, please, go ahead and tell us anything else that you would like to mention in the next minute?
The only thing I would like to close with is just I really appreciate your time for interviewing me and letting me apply for this position. I do believe I am a strong candidate for this with my background, management, being able to be a decision-maker. My work continues with the community now. I didn't, you know, I'm, I'm a guy that's out there every day now, talking to everybody in the city, whether it be Little League, football, at the high school games. I'm out there talking to everybody I can talk to, so I hear, but I want to be able to say I can do something now, and I know this is my opportunity and chance to be able to just, not just hear and make a comment here, I actually can do something. And that's my ultimate goal, is to make sure this place stays beautiful for my kids, your grandkids, your kids, your friends' kids, you know, that's what I'm here for. I'm not here for myself. I'm here to make sure my grandchildren love, love living here as well. And that's how I would end it.
All right. Thank you for your time, Mr. Briggs. I appreciate it.
The request has been sent. Mr. Phelps is on his way.
Thank you. Hello, Mr. Phelps.
Hello, Council, Mayor.
If you would, please begin with a one-minute introductory statement, letting us know a little bit about yourself.
Of course. Brian Phelps, Kingston Street, Grand Terrace, California. I'm a lifetime resident, pretty much, of Grand Terrace. I've been here almost my entire life. I've always helped out everywhere I can. I've always volunteered. I've been on multiple committees and multiple organizations in the city. I was the vice president. I was chairman of the Traffic Committee. I am currently the chairman of the Parks and Recreation Committee. I have always tried to help out everywhere I've gone. It, it's what I do. Even when I was in the city of San Dimas, I helped out on the Autism Youth Sports League, even though I haven't had any kids in, in that league. It was a joy to be able to help out and to, to be a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll begin with the first question, and that will be from Mayor Protem Wilson.
Hey, Brian.
Hey, Doug. Hey, Brian. Please explain your interest in serving on the planning commission and how your background will benefit the commission and the community.
Well, I'm a former planning commissioner, Mayor McNaboe and Mayor Protem Wilson. I've, I've served with both of you on the, on the commission. And I think that, that in itself helps out with understanding the job. The, the... Understanding the job itself is probably the biggest part of it, knowing that I'm not here as an expert, but as a member of the community and, and a voice of the community to tell them, to, to vote on what, what it is that they really want in the city and to, to be their, their voice and, and vote accordingly. Thank you.
And your next question will be from Councilmember Sylvie Robles.
Hi.
If an applicant were to contact you directly and request a one-on-one meeting about their project, how would you handle it?
Well, that, that I do believe is a violation. I would have to tell them to go through the, the city staff and, because discussing anything with an applicant or anybody other than staff prior to a meeting, in fact, discussing anything prior to a meeting is, is not allowed. And so I would direct them to go talk to staff and bring it to the planning commission meeting and discuss it there in front of the rest of the committee.
Your next question will be from Councilmember Bill Hussey.
Hello, Brian.
Hello, Bill.
Please identify what you think are some of the key development issues facing Grand Terrace in the next five to ten years.
Well, the Lewis Group project is probably one of the biggest issues coming through that will impact our city as far as traffic and development and, and growth, which I think is a great project to, that, that we need as a city to continue to grow a little bit. And the, the impact, if they ever do build, which I think will happen within the next five years, is the High Grove area building out. There's a lot of houses there that will impact Grand Terrace as well. And being able to provide places for them to, to shop and to enjoy our city as, as paying people, not necessarily taxpayers for our city, but as people who frequent our businesses. I think that's the biggest impact that I can think of. Thank you.
Your next question will be from Councilmember Jeff Allen.
Evening, Mr. Phelps.
Evening.
Do you feel, as a citizen of the community, that you are able to provide objective recommendations on various land use applications?
on various land use applications and other issues? And what will you use as your guide in decision making?
Well, as a former Planning Commissioner, I, um, I always use the, the general plan and, and staff's recommendations. Um, if I have any questions about something that, that comes to, um, the commission, uh, I, I look at staff and I, I ask the questions before the meetings, um, and try to get an understanding of what, what needs to happen. It, uh, sorry, he's, could you repeat the question again?
Sure, no problem. Uh, do you feel as a citizen of the community that you are able to provide objective recommendations on various land use applications and other issues?
Ah, yes, yeah, and I do believe I can.
Yeah.
Be, be fair and objective.
Okay.
Completely with, with my decisions, um, and I...
Okay, and the second question was what will you use as your guide in decision making?
Right, which was the general plan.
Okay.
Excellent. I wanted to make sure I got all of the question answered on that.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Phelps.
Okay, I get the last question. As a Planning Commissioner, what is your role in implementing the city's 2030 vision plan?
Uh, my role is to, um, provide assurance that those visions are followed through, and, uh, the, I know the 2030 vision is, is a big part of our growth in the future and how we want to be as a city, and, uh, as part of the Planning Commission, your, the decisions you make, um, impact everybody in the city and, and that vision of which direction we wanna go, and, uh, I, I think... I, hmm, I think being part of the commission and, and, um, following that, that vision is, is very important for our city, and being a part of making sure that that happens is important to me.
All right, thank you. So you have one minute to tell us anything else you'd like to tell us.
Well, um, like I said, I've, I've always been, um, a volunteer for, for my community. Um, I've always liked joining and, and being a part of making this city the best it can be for, for me and for the citizens, um, and working with my community leaders to, uh, to see that that is, is accomplished, making this the best that it can be. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Phelps.
Hello, how are you doing?
Good. If you would please, start with an inter, a one-minute introductory statement.
All right.
Let us know a little bit about you.
Uh, so my name is David Allenies, I lived in Grand Terrace for almost 35 years, 37 right now, so all but three years of my life. Uh, 2010, fortunate to buy a house with my wife in Grand Terrace, so we've been living permanently here since then. Um, right now I work with Environmental Health for the county, we work really closely with our planning department, try to see projects, um, succeed from beginning to end and give our condition, so it's very interesting seeing how a general plan works, um, and what an applicant has to do to see a project go from point A to all the way to the end succeed. Um, interested in the position, just to help this community, I volunteer right now as a youth soccer coach for, uh, the city here, and I'm just excited to, to help out if I can.
All right. Your first question will be from Mayor Pro Tem Wilson.
Thank you, Dave. Um, please explain your interest in serving on the Planning Commission and how your background will benefit the commission and the community.
Okay, so again, I've worked with the, our planning department for the county, um, good relationship with a lot of our planners, um, good relationship with the planning director, who's also resident for the, in Grand Terrace, but I'm a hard worker, I, I love to see things get done. Uh, right now I'm a lead for the position I'm in with H.S., and again, I, I know the, I, I know the ins and outs of planning as far as it's not just, okay, here's my application, I'd like to start a business, there's a lot of thought, a lot of commitment, a lot of things that goes forward to seeing these things, um, pan through, and so, um, sorry, that's basically what I got for that one. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Your second question will come from Councilmember Robles.
Hello. If an applicant were to contact you directly and request a one-on-one meeting about their project, how would you handle it?
Depends what the rules are. Um, right now I, I'm somewhat of a regulator, so, um, follow code, follow the rule, follow whatever, if that's allowed, um, I would go ahead and proceed, um, if not, I would invite them to come to a meeting that's open to the public or the procedures that they have to go to, to have a time with the Planning Commission.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, your next question will come from Councilmember Hussy.
Hello, David. Please identify what you think are some of the key development issues facing Grand Terrace in the next five to 10 years.
Um, limited space, unfortunately, Grand Terrace, the, the one good thing about it, it's a small community, but the other downside is it's a, a small community, so in order to develop it, we need to have a plan that makes sense, not just throwing this, this business here, this business there. We want, we need to see more commercial businesses that attract other people than just residents. I feel that would, one, create more traffic, but on the same part, a lot of revenue for the city. Um, the other thing is a lot of, there's not much housing, you see these small tracks pop up here, pop up there, but there's not much more room for housing, so if we can come up with another plan to invite more developers to be excited about, um, spending their bucks in, in Grand Terrace would be the key, key for Grand Terrace.
All right, your next question will come from Council, Councilmember Allen.
Good evening, Mr. Allen, Alleni...
Allenies.
Allenies.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Allenies, thank you. Do you feel as a citizen of the community that you are able to provide objective recommendations on various land use applications and other issues? And what will you use as your guide in decision making?
Again, um, stick to the general plan. Um, if, if it makes sense for that area, obviously we're not gonna have a commercial come up in a residential zone, but be, be able to review what's going on, um, what it takes, if it makes sense for this, does it fit the general plan? Is there any type of, um, Plan Amendment that we can do if it is a key, um, where it can fit in this, this, this zone, and, sorry, and have, have, have the conversations with the, with whatever developer or applicant and see what we can do to work with them if it makes sense.
Thank you.
I get the last question. As a Planning Commissioner, what is your role in implementing the city's 2030 vision plan?
My role would to be uphold the, the standards, the standards are there for a reason, um, make sure it, it fits with the city's plan, and the plan's there so we can grow as we need to grow, and not just to put things where they don't belong. Once again, planning, planning is a, is key to this, it's not just bring in this person, bring that person, it has to make sense, it has to fit with the flow, and so my goal would to see these projects, if it makes sense, if the, if it's fits the residents, if it fits the council's standards, um, what they want, let's move ahead, what can we do to, one, help them, because there's gray areas, not everything's always black and white, there's times where we may feel like we have to say no with things, but there may be areas where we can actually work together to push things along, so just be that open-minded, be, be dedicated to this and be, um, proactive instead of just waiting for things to come to me and working on it last minute.
All right, thank you. So if you would like to, you have one minute to tell us anything else you'd like us to know.
I just, I wanna thank you guys, I really appreciate the time. I know with my training, my experience, my dedication, that I'd be a great fit for this. I can guarantee if I was appointed that you guys wouldn't be disappointed with my, my work ethic or what I have to bring. Also, again, I wanna thank you for your time and I wanna thank, uh, ask you for your consideration for this, uh, appointment.
All right, thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmembers.
I'm gonna ask you to start with one-minute introductory statement about yourself.
Okay, my name's Rick Duarte, and, uh, I've been a Grand Terrace resident for about 13 years and an active, uh, community member for about 20 years. I say that because I, I lived down the hill for six years before that, and we fell in love with the community, and we decided to buy a home in Grand Terrace. Uh, I've been active with, uh, Little League for 20 years, uh, I ran the Grand Terrace Basketball League for about 10 years, and, uh, just been actively involved in this community, and I love it.
Thank you. Your first question will come from Mayor Pro Tem Wilson.
Hey, Rick. Please explain your interest in serving on the Planning Commission and how your background will benefit the commission and the community.
Well, um, if I can, from, from the beginning of my life, I've probably been actively involved. Uh, my mother walked with, uh, Cesar Chavez and Delano, and I was a baby at that time, I don't wanna give my age, but, and I walked with her at that time, but, so it's been embedded in my, the fabric of my life as far as being, uh, active towards, uh, just community outreach, and, uh, that's that portion of it, my mom actually instilled that in me, but, uh, working for the Metropolitan Water District, uh, you kinda learn to appreciate, uh, having a public service, and so one of the things that, uh, the Metropolitan Water does is bring, uh, water to 90 million customers from the San Diego border all the way up to the Ventura County, and so that's kinda been the cornerstone of, of why I like giving back or why, why I think it's important to be part of the public service.
Thank you. Your second question will come from Councilmember Sylvia Robles.
Hi.
Hello, how are you doing?
Um, if an applicant were to contact you directly and request a one-on-one meeting about their project, how would you handle it?
As a Planning Commissioner and being part of, um, other commissions, I think you, I would invite them to come to the actual meetings that we have. Um, I wouldn't turn them down, though, I would, you know, listen to them and say, you know what, this, there's a perfect opportunity for you to come to our next board meeting or our next, uh, Planning Commission meeting and, uh, state your case, uh, whatever the, the project may be, uh, that would be my approach as far as how to handle it, I would actually invite them to, to our meetings.
Thank you. Your next question will come from Councilmember Bill Hussy.
Hello, Rick. Please identify what you think are some of the key development issues facing Grand Terrace in the next five to 10 years.
Well, I'm currently working on a climate action planning committee and, uh, listening to some of the stuff that was going on today as far as, uh, electric vehicles, how we can implement that into Grand Terrace, uh, how, how we can make Grand Terrace more sustainable. Um, one of the key things about Grand Terrace and the community here and the, all of the citizens is that, uh, the quality of life here is, is, is something that we, we take to heart, and, uh, I, I like to keep that, I like to, to grow from it, well, so one of the things that you want to do is you want to make this community more sustainable, and I'd probably use whatever resources that I have in the past, whether it be my Masters in Sustainability to try and implement whatever I could to. I don't know if that actually hit a certain target, transportation would be one, solar, uh, would be the, uh, actually, because I'm, uh, part of the Little League community, you know, I know there's, uh, a green zone, a green incentive, so to keep, uh, Grand Terrace green, so I would probably push for, you know, making it, uh, more pleasing for our, our youth.
Your next question will come from Councilmember Jeff Allen.
Good evening, Mr. Duarte.
Good evening.
Do you feel as a citizen of the community that you are able to provide objective recommendations on various land use applications and other issues? And what will you use as your guide in decision making?
Well, like, I, I just mentioned that I have a Masters in Sustainability, and, um, what sustainability does is it introduces a triple bottom line where you're taking into consideration, uh, three, um, factors, and one of the factors is your environmental concerns, your social concerns, and then of course, no business can run without a bottom line, so those are your, that's what's considered a triple bottom line. So I would use that as my base to, to come up with a, a plan for land use, uh, whether it be for, um, residential homes or parks or, um, just, you know, maybe organic growing, uh, there's a, a lot of things that you can go towards, you know, um, having, um, a good, a good use for, for the land that we have here, which is not a lot, but it's enough to, to consider and, and take into, um, a sustainable approach.
Thank you.
All right, the last question is mine. As a Planning Commissioner, what is your role in implementing the 2030 vision plan?
Well, there's, there's five goals that, uh, that I read that you guys have, one is you have a, uh, fiduciary duty, which is, uh, making sure that we can meet, uh, um, the guidelines or, or try and make an, a, what was it? Okay, let me skip that one, that's, that's the, the second one is, uh, is that you, uh, kinda drawing a blank, uh, I know there's a...
What would your, what would your role be in implementing it?
Well, my role would be to, to try and enforce all the goals that we try to do, and one of the things is that, uh, you know, you, you want to make sure that you, uh, that, that you're, you're doing it, uh, with the interests of, of our community, okay? You're, whatever we, we are agreeing on is that, uh, you're creating a partnership with, uh, either local businesses or, uh, private businesses, and, uh, also creating the partnership with the community itself by either, uh, advocating, uh, through, uh, social media, uh, whatever resource that we have to, to spread the word out of what we're trying to accomplish here, those would be some of the things that I, I think I would, uh, emphasize on.
Thank you. All right, if you would please, you have one minute to tell us anything else that you want us to know.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, I, I have a Masters in Sustainability. I went to the University of Redlands. I got a BS in Business there. I've been working on several large water projects that have given me the tools to kind of schedule and budget things that, or, or projects that we might need to work on. Not that you guys are not budgeting them any, any better than I would or whatever, you know. I'm sure you guys are doing a great job, but I'm just saying I could, I have the tools to, to help out in, in those aspects.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Pardon me, Madam Mayor. Staff has informed me that applicant Ken Stewart was not sequestered. Therefore, he apparently is not here.
Okay.
And I do have one public comment card on this item as well.
Alright, so that was our last applicant. And so at this time, before we make our decision, we will take public comment. Our request to speak is from Bobby Forbes. Street sweeping. Number eight, we're on number seven. I, I think I've done that before. Alright, I will hold on to that. So is it, were there any requests to speak for this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
Alright, so at this time, we have the difficult job of choosing one of our four candidates for the one position that we have open. So I will bring it back to council for discussion and consideration of a motion.
Make a motion for Brian Phelps.
Okay, so I have a motion for Brian Phelps. Councilmember Allen, you were going to say something?
I was going to make a motion for Jeremy Briggs.
Okay, so I have a motion for Ryan Phelps. I have an alternate motion for Jeremy Briggs. Any further discussion? Any further motions?
I'll make a motion for Rick Duarte.
Okay, and I have a third motion for Rick Duarte. Any further motions or discussion?
Can I second the motion?
You can.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I will second the motion for Jeremy Briggs.
Alright, so we have a motion by Councilmember Allen for Jeremy Briggs. And a second by Mayor Protem Wilson. So we will vote on that particular item.
Motion passes with councilmembers Allen, Hesse voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, Mayor McNebo voting yes. Councilmember Robles votes no.
Okay, so the motion carries at this time and I'm going to thank everybody, all four of the candidates that came out. I know it's very difficult to stand up there at that lectern and answer questions. Even if you're good at public speaking, the minute you stand in front of that lectern, I don't know what happens. It just. So thank you so much for being here and Jeremy Briggs, congratulations to you. Anything further? Councilmember Allen.
Just really quick, I was really impressed with everything everybody said. And I stood in front of that, on that podium multiple times before I ever got a chance to sit behind this dais on the Planning Commission. So I'd encourage you to please not walk away from here and say, ah, never again. Please come back. We need you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Robles.
And, you know, if you could attend some of the meetings with your input on, as we go along, it'd be greatly appreciated. You, you all have so much to offer.
Councilmember Hesse.
You guys all did great. Like Mr. Allen said, I've been there too. You know, it's hard to speak in public sometimes. Well, you know, the questions, you know, you, you know what you're going to say before you get there. Then also your mind just goes blank. I do it all the time still, so. I don't know what to say to my wife half the time, but my mind goes blank. You know, you guys keep going, you know. All your backgrounds are similar to all of ours. You know, I, you all started coach. I coached with Rick and Brian and stuff, so you know, it's, it's not like, you know, if we could, I'd like to have everybody on the committee. But there's also other committees. I mean, Rick, you talked about the, the water, you know, board. I mean, we have a water board here in Grand Terrace. David, you know, oh my God, you know, the work that you have done, you know, we'd like to still have you come over here. Brian, you continue to work with the Parks and Recs. And Jeremy, you know, can you, the great work, you know. You guys should all pat yourselves on the back. You all been there, working hard, you're in the trenches. We all started that way. And you know, don't feel like, you know, disappointment, but you know, I'm looking forward to seeing you guys again on other things. And just keep your ear out and you guys have a good night. God bless.
Thank you again. And I know that you will all stay involved because I know you all love this city. So again, thank you for your time. And we will move to item number eight, which is approval of a contractor agreement between the City of Grand Terrace and Clean Street for street sweeping services. Mr. Allen French, Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Mayor Protem, Allen French, Public Works, here to present this item on street sweeping. The staff report supports goal number two, public safety by investing in critical infrastructure. In March 2016, the city council entered an agreement, contract with street, citywide street sweeping services, which is valid through the end of this month. It's up at the end of February. Excuse me. In January 11th, 2019, the city sent out a request for proposal for street sweeping services. We advertised at the city website, sent out emails to, to some street sweeping companies. The city did receive three proposals on January 31st, 2019, at the city clerk's office. And they were provided to the Public Works Department. The proposals were to include street sweeping at the current schedule, which is per the map shown there, which includes six residential zones in the city. And the sweeping occurs on three Thursdays of every month. The main routes and commercial areas are swept weekly. The proposals included two alternatives to be considered, should they become available or are selected. The first alternative is to sweep streets, odd and even addresses in the residential areas. This sweeping would be on one side of the street on one Thursday. And the other side would be later in the month on another Thursday. This option would allow residents to park across the street from the street side that's being swept on that Thursday. This allows the citizens then to move their vehicles to the other side, should the sweet, street sweeper be on that side. The city has tried some other alternatives to reduce any compliance issues. They have started street sweeping later in the day, hoping the, the residents that are employed would, would be out of the way. And so that, that option was tried, but it had minimal effect. So this option, the odd and even street sweeping, would cause additional cost on an annual basis as well as for implementation. The additional cost is, is about fifty thousand. We're estimating at this point for additional signage, as well as education for the public and getting the word out. In addition to the odd even street sweeping, the other alternative was included in the proposal were to include license plate reading. Should that option become available, some legislation would have to change before we could do that. And if it did within the terms of this contract, then we would have that availability. The proposals were reviewed and graded based on scope of work, the team, compliance requirements, and references provided. This is an example of current signage on the streets. And again, it's every Thursday, or three Thursdays of the month. And for residential areas in the six zones. Of the proposals, Clean Street received the highest scores of the grading. And providing that standard service as well as the alternatives. At this time, staff is recommending to award the contract agreement to Streets, Clean Street, for the current schedule as it is implemented right now. And authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. I'm here for any questions, should the council have any at this time.
Thank you, Director French. What questions are there of staff? Councilmember Hesse.
You know, I, I know the staff hears it all the time, but the question is, do you really think the odd and even side street's going to work? Cause you know, one, I don't, fifty thousand dollars for additional signs. We could use that fifty thousand dollars, you know. Trying to find pennies for law enforcement. But the odd and even, we're going to, I think we're going to confuse more people. I mean, have you guys did studies on this with other cities?
Yes, Councilman. We did poll other cities. We were looking for additional ways to bring in a higher percentage of compliance instead of citing people all the time. And this was an option that's other cities have used. Again, it's, it's been used with a varied, varied results. Some cities feel that it helped them get compliance. Others didn't feel it helped at all.
Well, I've seen downtown LA, downtown Long Beach, I mean, these big metropolitan cities. But for our city, I don't see that working, Mr. French. I mean, I have people get, get more confused. This is what I'm seeing. And then I'm seeing those spend fifty thousand dollars on signs, a waste of money. And it, I just think it's going to confuse people. I mean, you, did you do a survey on a small city like this? Or did you do surveys on bigger cities?
The one in particular, and I spoke with their, their sweeper representative, who, and this was in the City of Duarte. So they've implemented this. And they, they are happy with it, although they spent a considerable amount more for education and signage. Our signage right now, which we can enhance to get better compliance is one option. But this was, again, this was an option for the council to consider. The recommendation of, of number one would be keep everything the same. Number two is to implement the odd even. So the council does have the choice.
I understand that. And we do need more signage. I mean, you know, just to let people know because the sign on either in the street than the people in the middle usually don't know what's going on, especially if they're out of town and stuff. So I understand that, but I don't understand paying signage to change the streets and make it one side or another. Then they're going to complain like, well, I thought it was this side this week. I mean, I just, I think, and I just wanted to know if there was a survey done on a city our size, if they had any issues, ongoing issues. Cause I, personally, I think this is going to be an ongoing issue on which side of the street I'm on. And I'm looking at that fifty thousand dollar tag too on that thing. So I just wanted to know if there was surveys or studies on that.
We had just polled other cities, is all.
Alright, thank you.
Councilmember Allen.
Mr. French, do you have a, can you describe the signage plan? So what will, what's fifty grand going to pay for? And what will they look like? Do you have a, can you tell us what that sign might look like?
Yes, Councilman. So here's our existing sign. The, the first step would be to try to utilize this to say either, you know, whichever side the street is, odd address or even address. To utilize that and then maybe we could modify it, so we wouldn't have to purchase all the signs. But this would only be half the signage. We need double the amount of signs to do the odd and even because each street side has to be signed. So that's the first portion is to use what we have and, and save as much as we can. But the other, the other item of that would be placement. So, sorry, as Councilman Hesse related the signage, the, the plan right now is if you have a neighborhood, we sign every entrance to the neighborhood. We don't necessarily go inside and sign all the streets. So we could, we could add those signs to help compliance. But with the odd even, it, it would be substantially more signs that we would have to add. But we would have to add those.
Cause as, you know, as much as you're concerned about the, the cost of the signs, I'm concerned about the, I mean, I, you know, streets with, with signs, 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 signs everywhere, you know. It just sort of takes away from the aestheticness of the community. That's all.
Further questions? Okay. Councilmember Robles.
You know, there have been some, just, okay. So I guess, to keep it to a question, I was getting into discussion. Thank you. I guess my question is, how did we come to deciding to, to change street sweeping contractor agreement? Was this something that came?
I know, I know, Councilmember. This, the, the contract that we have now from 2016 is, is up. The three years are up, so we're going.
Yeah, so I guess my question would be more, I think, for the city manager. I guess why are we looking at, at an alternative of odd even streets that's in this contract? What, you know, why would we, you know? I guess what my question is, is why are we taking the approach of not having a discussion prior to letting out a contract? If this is something we really wanted to do?
Mr. Duffy.
Yes, Mayor Protem, I'm sorry, Mayor, Mayor and Councilperson Robles, for the record, G. Earl Duffy, the city manager. This has been an ongoing discussion that we've had with, with, over the last couple of years in terms of trying to, we've had residents come in, talk about the issue in terms of not having enough spaces to park. So what I had indicated that when the contract was up, that we would come back with some options for, for the council. And so our recommendation is that we have the, we, we use the current schedule as it is. But one of the things that we said we would do, we would bring back some options. Along the way, we modified the hours of, of sweeping. And we saw no impact in the number of tickets that were issued. The number one complaint that we keep receiving is that there's no place to park. I have too many cars. There's no place to park on my street. So one of the options is a left side, right side. As Mr. French did indicate, we do believe that increased signage would help for the existing service. But one of the things that I think that we've been, we've been under is the issue of why so many parking tickets? And we've, we've tried a number of ways to, it's very, it's interesting. When we had the automated video ticketing, and then we had the individual person driving behind the sweeper, we still have this roughly the same number of violations consistently every month. And so after looking at other options, this is the only other option that we have available for us is that. The question is, are, is there no place to park? Do people have too many cars? The left side, right side was the other option. Now, staff's recommendation was to continue on with, with the existing service. But we did, I did say that we would bring back this particular option of left side, right side.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Wilson.
Quick question. How many tickets have we totaled in, let's say, average per month? That have to do solely with parking in relation to this?
We average anywhere from twenty-seven to thirty-five tickets each Thursday.
Out of four thousand four hundred households?
Well, we, we only sweep a certain section. We sweep probably a quarter of the city each, each, each time.
Gotcha. Okay, and, and let me just ask a second question in relation to that then. In those instances, is it because they don't have a, you know, the homeowner doesn't have a driveway where they could park the car? a driveway where they could park the car, or is it just a matter of convenience situation?
Well, maybe Ms. Malina can help me with that, but what I've encountered is that there, they seem to say that they don't, they don't have enough spaces to park, or they are, you know, we have issues with the holiday period, we stop ticketing during certain periods of times of the holiday. Kids growing up and the number of kid, people having cars in the household.
Yeah, five cars to a house kind of thing.
Right.
Okay, and then I've also noticed that we still haven't been able to figure out how on Preston, that apartment complex still has that trash can in one of their parking spaces. And it's, you know, one space is one space, you know, it's like a penny is a penny. So, okay.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Further questions? Okay. My question is about the hours. It seemed that the hours in the contract are a little bit different than what our posted hours are. It seems like they end sooner.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I did notice that. I did fail to get that in time, to get this corrected, but yes, the, the hours in the contracts date six to one PM, and the, and the contract should be six to three PM. The three PM is the correct time that it would finish, not the one PM.
Okay, does our current contract hold the sweeping company to making sure that they don't leave behind debris? And how do we enforce that? And how will we enforce that?
Yes, the, the contract requires any, any debris to be picked up, and we've had instances where there were areas missed, and the contractor's able to come out that day typically and redo the sweeping and picking up that areas. So we are monitoring it, and, and they have been responsive as, so far, that we, we've had issues, they've been really responsive and to be able to address those issues.
Okay, and then as far as, in this particular contract, it talked about communicating with city staff if there are branches that are in the way? And I understand that we've had issues with that with our current contract, so how would we make sure that that's enforced as well?
They do, as they go through, they note the issues, whatever Thursday they're on, and they allow, they notify us of those issues, and we in turn address them either with our tree contractor or our maintenance staff. They go out and address that. So that's really not, the sweeper wouldn't be trimming the tree or anything, but they just need to notify us.
Correct, I just, my understanding was they were supposed to be doing that, I wondered if they were.
Oh, yes.
Okay. And then Mr. Duffy, how many of the citations that are given are, are challenged?
Ms. Malina might be able to help me with that, but I, I would, I would say maybe ten percent of them that are actually challenged.
And are they overturned?
So, street sweeping appeals, there has to be a valid reason to dismiss them, for instance. In some instances, when we get a street sweeping ticket, the vendor will buy that driver's, excuse me, the license plate, will then do research with the DMV and get a DMV hit as far as who's the registered owner. And so, so we've dismissed when the owner has changed, but, so the previous owner gets that ticket, we, we've dismissed that. We've dismissed where there's been a signage issue, and so we've dismissed those. But we, we won't dismiss because a person just forgot that day. It has to be a valid reason.
Thank you. Councilmember Hussey, you had another question?
Yes, the license plate reader, we, I know we're working on it, but if we don't get that approved through the state to bring it back, I mean, are we gonna be, are we gonna be deducting the sixty-five hundred and sixty-six hundred?
Well, that's only gonna be added if, if that, if that comes into play.
If it comes into play, okay. All right, thank you.
All right, any further questions? All right, I'll open it up to public comment. I know I have one public comment card. Thank you. So Bobby Forbes, you are first. All right. Do you want the microphone? Okay.
Thank you, good evening. Bobby Forbes, Brent Avenue, Grand Terrace. Some of the items I wanted to address have just been discussed, but I wonder about the code enforcement vehicle following behind. So that's three, four days a month that we have code enforcement not doing the other code enforcement job, but following around with the street sweeper and following up with the tickets, I guess. That bothers me. I think, from the people that I talk to, which are homeowners mostly, that starting at nine o'clock is better than six or seven, because then everybody's gone to school. So if they've got five vehicles at the house, then the ones that come and go all day long are gone. They don't have to stress about where's their car, and do we run it across the street to the parking lot, or whatever they're doing is in panic mode. So I think that would reduce tickets and make it better for the community if it was consistent. It only happened for a month or something, I think. I don't have any issues, my cars are not in the street, so, but I hear it from people, that if it didn't start so early, it would make their life a whole lot easier. And that's what it's about, making the lives better for our community, I think. Signage stinks in Grand Terrace for every street, for street signs, for speed signs, for street sweeping signs, no matter what it is, they're all faded, they're turned. I went by one at Reed and Cardinal tonight, it was switched, I knew where I was, was at, but the person behind me didn't, and they stopped because they thought they were on the right street. But somebody, the kids, probably had flipped the sign around. This kind of stuff goes on. But we don't have good signs, including the no truck signs that should be in our neighborhood. They're faded, they're bent, they're turned, and they're just needing, updating, just like the markings on the streets for crosswalks and things of that, but that's another subject. But, but it all kind of falls into the category of making the people that live here and drive here aware of what's going on. The hours of operation, I think, is a really big deal. Code enforcement, that's my second one. I don't usually have notes, I usually wing it. I tried to make it better this evening, and I thank Mr. French for standing up here. You can tell he's not feeling very well, but we appreciate your, your hours of time for putting into this. I know that we need street sweepers. My other question is, now I have it, is that is, are any of these three proposals from the same company that currently do it? That's my one question.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
So. We'll redirect on that one.
Okay, because I think they do a lousy job. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next speaker is Jeffrey McConnell. Thank you, Ms. Forbes.
Jeffrey McConnell, Walden Avenue, Grand Terrace. If you want to know if the alternate sides of the street will be accepted or not, why don't you put it on the survey? Ask the people, they'll let you know. Additionally, is always a problem, because people are, haven't gone to work yet, so it starts too early, seven o'clock, or, as she said, even later would be better, if they start at nine o'clock and the company had two trucks, they wouldn't have to take so long to do it. So has everybody considered just street sweeping during the six months that we need it, like when the wind blows, the leaves fall? That was a thought process. I've never done a survey of what it's like the other six months, but I just wanted to throw that out. And in my, our little neighborhood over there in northwest quadrant of the city, twice in the last five years that I can recall, we were skipped over twice, two months in a row, because of holiday and/or, of course, it's rainy season too during that time. So it just happened this, not this month, but the prior two months were completely skipped, and those were the worst two months that we needed the street sweeping because of the winds. In our neighborhood up on the terrace, all this tumbleweeds and crap from down below the riverbed blows straight up Maple and Burns Avenue and ends up on Walden Avenue, and it's a mess. And it got ignored for two months. So maybe, and I complained at the last time to the staff, I think it was Jessica, and I never got a response on anything about it, but I would appreciate, since it's already happened twice in the last five years, to consider something about that for emergency callbacks, because it was really bad for two months in a row. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. All right, we'll close public comment, and I'm gonna redirect some of these questions to staff. Let's see. Is this the same company that is currently providing service?
Yes, Madam Mayor, this Clean Street is the current company that we have, and they provided a proposal along with the two other companies.
Okay.
And we're graded altogether. Yes.
Well, I, I heard from one of our residents that they are unhappy with the quality of the work, and so my suggestion is we find out why that is. Let's see, later starts, is there a reason why we do not want to continue doing this, the street sweeping to begin at nine o'clock?
During the timeframe that we did the later start, we, we ended up with the same number of tickets, and one of the potential problems that we had was we were unable to finish by the, by the three o'clock hour. But that just means that they would need to bring additional resources in. So if it's the desire for the council to request a later start, we can certainly ask that to be implemented.
Okay. What about emergency callbacks? The idea when a street or an area is missed because of a holiday?
Absolutely. There's, in the, in the contract, there is, there is a provision for us to call them back when, when the service isn't adequate. One of the things that we did though during the holiday period is that because of the number of vehicles that merged upon, we, we canceled street sweeping for a certain period of time from Thanksgiving and then also around Christmas and the New Year's holiday.
What are the, what are the laws regarding the number of times a city needs to sweep the streets?
Do you have that answer, Ms. Malina?
No, I don't have that answer.
One of the things, the reason why we, we sweep the streets is because of, you know, stormwater pollution. And we currently don't have an issue in terms of meeting our requirements. I can certainly get back to you on the amount of time, but I know that based on my experience, once a month is the, is been the, the limit, the, the least amount of times that a city's been swept.
Okay. And then what will we do about upgraded signs if we do not implement the odd and even?
We, we do have some signs that we ordered that we haven't completed, so we, we'd go around and put, take out the faded ones and put those up, and then look at, you know, one of the things that I tell residents when they, when they, when they have a violation and it comes to me, and they say, there was no signage, and I say to them, okay, I will go out to your house, and if I don't pass a street sweeping sign going into your neighborhood, I will waive your ticket. And then, in no cases have I ever waived the ticket because of that. There's, we at least have signs that on an entryway into a neighborhood, there are signs, they're not, we need to have more signs, so we can have more signs in every street. But I, I have not had a case where I've had to waive a ticket because going into a neighborhood, there wasn't a sign that, that was, that was posted.
Okay. Thank you. All right, time for further discussion. Councilmember Robles.
Well, this subject, I'm not gonna make many friends with, with my peers on this. You know, I've lived here forty years, never had an issue with street sweeping. Had five cars for five children, that's pointing in the nineteen eighty-nine, I'm positive, never had an issue. But here's some of the things that happened. I saw, I had a cleaning service come, and they got a ticket. So I called the acting city manager at the time, and I said, why did this person get a ticket? There's no signs. Well, yes, there's signs, you know, there's like one approaching your neighborhood and you have to look up, which I don't know who does that. And then I think there was an adjustment, so the signs were adjusted sloppily. But, you know, I hear a lot of anger about the, the cost of signs and blah, 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 and, and this is, this is an issue. Part of this that I'm concerned about is code of conduct among the city council people. So I was told that, yes, there's signs, whether I can read them or not, or I didn't look up or not, you know, that, that was not an issue, and so what I did is I paid the ticket for, for the, for the cleaning service. So then I find out that other people on the council go and they have tickets routinely waived. And they're not for very good reasons, you know, some are made up reasons, and they even have shared with me this made up reason that, that the, the ticket was waived. I don't think that the city council should be asking for tickets to be, to be waived for, for silly reasons. I also think that we shouldn't be guiding or steering staff on an issue where I've heard that there has been some tremendous angry outbursts directed toward staff when this is going on. I think it's inappropriate that we're handling with our constituency, street sweeping issues at that close of a level. I don't think it'd be appropriate for me to run out to somebody's home when this issue's being, being discussed. So now it seems like, you know, staff, in my opinion, feels that because they feel that certain people on this body have more power, or they have, you know, organized groups in this community, you know, that support this, and they're angry about tickets, and they don't like it, that we need to spend fifty thousand dollars on signs, and we need to figure out how to go right, you know, one side of the street versus another side of the street. So I would like to think about maybe kicking this back and concentrating on what our, our baseline requirement is, you know, with, with the, what's it called, M-P-S?
N-P-D-D-S.
Yeah, and, 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 and start there, and possibly, you know, get based on whatever direction the peers have, as far as times, starting times, maybe that would help. But, you know, there's been discussions that I see where people are angry, the arguments about parking in front of somebody's home. You know, you don't own the parking space in front of somebody's home. So here's a, you know, a, a thing that I put out there. You know, if you would clean out your garage, you would have two spaces, and you have two more behind those at least. So my solution was, anybody comes to my home, they park in, you know, I'm fortunate I have three-car garage, so they park on the third slot, slot there. I've also had where, you know, a neighbor has, you know, quite a bit of, of driving people, and so, yeah, park them in, in my spot. But, you know, it seems like we're doing backflips of start later, go one side of the street, go the other side of the street, we, you know, we don't want signs, but, you know, if my friend gets a ticket, you know, I want you to waive it. It just seems like we've gotten into a bad spot on this, and I'd like to have a, a, a new look at this.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles. My position on this is that I'd like to see us have compliance. I don't know that odd and even streets are going to get us that. I think it's going to cause more confusion. I know that our street signs are difficult to read. I think it's difficult for people to figure out which, which area they're in, especially when they're on the border between two. And so I'd like to see us focus more on, on having a better sign plan for what we have. If there are areas that could benefit from a later start time and that means more compliance, then, then that should be an option. However, I think that we need to find a way to let people know what day their street sweeping is. I know that, that the notices go out in email on Sunday, but you've got from Sunday to Thursday to forget. Now, I understand people should be able to remind themselves, but if, if we have a service that, that we can program differently for people that is closer to the day that they're gonna have the street sweeping, that might be something to look at too. I'm not sure what the answer is, but, but I think that we need to focus more on how do we get compliance? How do we get a good job from our street sweepers? Because, because I do hear complaints about that. And how do we do it for the least amount of money? Further comments? Councilmember Allen.
Who, who gets the most tickets? Is it the residents that, on the street, or is it workers that are there for the day, like contractors? Do we, do we keep a analysis of that?
It's mostly residents, because when, you know, several months back, we instituted a policy that if a contractor or housekeeper got a ticket, if they could demonstrate to the city that they have a business license, and that they were doing work for that resident, then based on the policy that that ticket would get waived, or dismissed, I should say. then based on the policy that that ticket would get waived or dismissed, I should say. So mainly it's residents.
Okay.
Or, or visitors of residents, but not, not business contractors.
Okay. Do we put a, do we give a, a street sweeping schedule to contractors when they come in for their license or permits? So that they'll, they'll know what days they're going to be impacted? Maybe we could if we don't.
No, we don't, but we could.
Okay. How long did we try the, the late start? How long did that go forward, that test?
So that test went for a month. It was all of June. And what we found was the later start helped the people in the mornings, but we shifted it to the afternoon. So we, that's why we had the same amount of tickets, is we shifted that responsibility not to park in the street into the afternoon.
Okay. So if, we could, was a month long enough to, to make a, a sound determination and, and could this be implemented on a test basis for a period of time to see if it is successful and if not? But I know that spending 50 grand on signs is kind of an expensive, you know, like test. So I don't know how that, that would go over.
So Councilman Allen and, and the rest of the council, if it is the desire of the council to implement street sweeping at a later date, at a later time, we can, we can certainly do that. And I think as Ms. Molina pointed out and, and some of the speakers in the past, the people who are aware of their street sweeping, they know what time the sweeper normally comes. So, so if, if we change it, we, we will need to, to educate everyone and then you'll see a probably a reduction as, as you move forward. So the, the problem that we're running across is that the first thing we do in the morning is we sweep the major thoroughfares before any traffic starts. So then we're going to have a gap in between and that's, that's what our, our problem is. Because we have that gap in between from doing the major corridors where there's traffic and then we, then we have to go into the neighborhoods. So starting at nine o'clock created a little challenge, challenge for us. But if it is the desire of the council to, to move the time, we can certainly make it work.
Mayor Protem Wilson.
Madam Mayor, I would, I would like to make a motion that we adopt or we approve the recommendation number one, the staff award the street sweeping contractor agreement to Clean Street beginning March 1st, 2019 through February 28th, 2022 for an amount not to exceed 54,508, including the $2,500 kicker annually maintaining the existing schedule.
And authorize the city manager to execute the.
And, yeah, item number three, authorize the city manager to execute the grant. Nope, just the one. Two's the two stepper.
For a second, I'd like to note, you know, we're all saying nine o'clock. I mean, can we change it to eight o'clock? That's one hour difference.
Can, can we have a valet service and park people's cars for them and remind them?
Probably for a fee. I, I would just say, can we focus on ways to, to have compliance within the system that we have?
If, if you execute the contract, I would have the discretion to work with them to, to do programs to tweak the time and, and try to get, try to optimize it.
And you could offer a valet service for a fee.
Well, I have, I do have a question for the city attorney on, on this.
Okay. Councilmember Robles.
So we're going to tweak, tweak the times. So then we have to have signage that gives proper notice, don't we? And do these signs currently fulfill that?
We'd have to take a look at the signs, but yes, we would have to make sure the signage reflects our policy.
Well, the current, the current time is from 6:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Okay, so we're covered there.
Yeah, and so we're finishing right around one o'clock. So if we modify in that time range, we're, we should be fine.
All right.
I second.
Okay. So motion by Mayor Protem Wilson for item one and three. Second by Councilmember Hussey. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes. Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
Thank you. I know a number of you are waiting for item nine, but I would like a five-minute recess. So we're in recess for five minutes. All right, we'll resume to regular session. Item number nine, professional services agreement between the City of Grand Terrace and Hirsch and Associates. Sandra Molina, Planning and Development Services Director.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. As indicated by the mayor, this item before the council is a professional service agreement for design services for the Blue Mountain Trail and Blue Mountain Trailhead. This, this item does support our 2030 vision statement relating to the quality of life for the City of Grand Terrace and also goal number four, to develop successful partnerships. So just a little bit of history. So the city owns these three parcels here, right off of the knuckle of Observation and Bamburan. These properties were titled over to the city in early 1980s as part of, in lieu of a fee. So when, when development occurs, there's a park fee that's paid, or in this case, in lieu of those fees, these properties were granted to the city. The city general plan shows these as, shows these properties as park and our zoning shows it as public. And so the, the intent, the long-term intent is, was, was to develop these as a wilderness park. So the city applied for a state grant and we were awarded $212,000 to develop the Blue Mountain Trail and Trailhead. And so the, the proposal is to develop a trailhead at this location and connect to the Blue Mountain Road that comes up to the top of Blue Mountain. These properties are privately owned and the private property owner has indicated concurrence with regard to a access easement. And so that is something that we will also finalize as we progress in this process. So the city sent out RFP to 14 app consulting firms for this project and we received three responses. These are the three proposers and these are the, excuse me, the amounts for the project. So the, the RFP was, was for design services and then also construction management and inspection services. The city interviewed two of the proposers, TransTech and Hirsch and Associates. So we rated the interview and we rated the proposals and we're recommending that the city council contract with Hirsch and Associates. Mr. Charles Foley with Hirsch and Associates is present this evening, if there's any questions for him. But what we found for, with the, these projects is that the cost of the proposal is, is a lot higher than staff anticipated. However, when we look at the proposals, they are very complete. But what we are recommending is that we look at this project in two phases. Phase one being the design work. And that's what's before the council and, and the contract amount is for $145,000 and $510. So the, the phase one design work would be the topography that needs to be done to determine the best way to design the trail and the trailhead. There will be community outreach. Part of this task will also prepare the plans and specification in engineering so that after the, the design is, is agreed upon, then we'll have an idea of what the construction costs would be. Task two A is to include a concept plan for a Blue Mountain identifier. That's one of the things that we, we heard that the council wanted to see an identifier on top of Blue Mountain and so we will also look at the concept for that. And so as indicated, this phase of the work would be $145,510. This will get us all the way up to the construction plans. We will come back to the city council and, for approval of those plans and to go to the next step, which is to prepare the bid documents so we can get construction estimates and then the management and the inspection when we're actually under construction. And so that phase two is approximately another $70,000. But for now, we're asking the council to approve phase one in the amount of the 145, 510. And that the council approved the appropriation of that amount from the parks fund to be able to enter into this contract and that the city council authorized the city manager to execute this contract and make any amendments necessary to complete the project. And with that, I conclude my presentation. Again, Mr. Foley's present if the council has any questions for him and I'm happy to respond to questions.
Thank you, Director Molina. I have a question before I, I open it up that's more of an administrative question. And that's in the title of this agenda. Nowhere in here did we indicate that it was for the Blue Mountain Wilderness Park or the trail. And that seems as though it's not in fitting with custom of how we title our reports. And so I'm wondering, even Mr. City Attorney, did we notice this properly? For those that would be interested in the design services for this park.
Yeah, I, your point is well taken. I think, number one, the agenda is posted on the website along with the staff reports. So anybody who was interested in knowing what Hirsch and Associates was could go to the website and find out. But from the face of the document, I would say that there is nothing in there regarding the Blue Mountain.
I, I would not necessarily know to go look for it if, if I was looking for something for Blue Mountain.
Correct. And then I think that point is well taken.
Okay.
So i- if you prefer, and I would support maybe just pulling the item for this evening and bringing it back in the future at, at the next council meeting.
What do my colleagues think about that? Councilmember Robles.
We're, at what point are we going to be in where this goes through a, a planning process?
Well, the design of the, the design phase, we would have a community meeting to solicit input from the community and, and the, the surrounding neighbors.
Well, because my feeling is this is okay because folks are going to be able to have something more substantial just than a concept to be able to comment on and, and participate on if we proceed with this.
Thank you. Councilmember Allen.
Do you think this is that serious of a, of a conflict? I mean, I sort of with Councilmember Robles, I'm sort of seeing and understanding her point of view in that there'll be opportunities for the residents to, and we're not going to be discussing any kind of designs tonight, I don't think, are we?
That's true. It just didn't seem like it was very transparent to me. Point taken, though. I, I do believe tonight we are only looking at the contract. We are not talking about the merits of the design or any of those, those items. I just, I just want to make sure that we're not in the habit of creating agenda titles that don't give the full picture of what we're doing. Be helpful for me.
But we're not doing anything more than that, right?
I know, but if you look at the last one, approval of contractor agreement between the City of Grand Terrace and Clean Street for street sweeping services. And so we, we generally talk about what this contract is for and for some reason, we did not do it on this one. And, and I was troubled by that. But if, I can see both sides of it. I know what we're here for tonight. I'm just, I'm just raising the issue because I, I don't want it to be a habit.
Madam Mayor, that was an oversight and we'll make sure that we're more clear in the future.
Okay. All right, questions from council? Mayor Protem Wilson.
Two questions. One for the, the architect, but the other one for staff. And that is, is there a way when we do these kinds of things that we can get a list of the, the people that we went out to bid for?
Yes.
Whether they were awarded or not, it'd be just nice to know.
I, I can do, if, like, I can send that to the city manager so they can forward it to the council, so they can give you that information subsequent to the meeting.
Great. Thank you.
You had one for the, for the designer?
Yeah, I do have one for the designer and the one for the, the proposed contract, or contract designer. I see that we've got a, are you confident in the one equals 300 topo for this thing? Considering how, you know, scattered and rocky and stuff it is?
So, good evening, Charles Foley, Hirsch and Associates, Vice President, Licensed Landscape Architect in California, Nevada. Happy to be here before you, really excited about your project. It's unique, obviously a unique setting and I'm, we're really excited to be a part of it and, and jumping into it. So we have two, we're, we're surveying the site differently based on the topography. The upper level with the, with the slope is, is greater. When we get our contour plans, there, the, our surveys are done with one-foot contours, two-foot contours, five-foot contours, that sort of thing.
Right.
And because of the severity of the slope, we've opted to survey the slope area in two-foot contours so that they can be read on a plan. At the lower portion of the project, where the city had done some preliminary conceptual design work, that portion we're surveying it with one-foot contours where this, the, the severity of slope is not as steep.
Got you, I saw that. Although my question is, is your base topo is going to, your base photo topo is going to be one equals 300?
So the, the aerial photography is shot, yeah, shot at that. But what we receive, I believe it's one, one to 40. We actually scale our plans at one to 20 for this, for projects such as this.
Right.
Depends on what we want to, what sort of detail we need to show, but what you're referring to is just that aerial, the flyover.
Yeah, so we know in our, in our, behind the dais here, so it's accurate to state that your, your 40 scale is going, and with the one-foot contour is going to be for the southwest corner primarily.
Yeah, and part of that language is how the survey is delivered to us. So we order it from our survey subcontractor, who's a part of our team.
Right.
And they, they deliver it to us and we try to do that the most efficient way we can. So when they shoot it from the aerial perspective, we don't need to do, you know, multiple passes. They're able to get, capture it one pass. But what we receive is actually a, an AutoCAD file, a digital file that will become the city's plan. And that's really one-to-one, meaning that if you, it's a little, it's a little bit of an abstract concept if you don't work with AutoCAD drawings, but when you're in the survey, you're actually, if you offset something a foot, it's a, it's a true foot. You're actually, it's, it's what's considered to be one-to-one. So the, the language for this, it sounds like you have some experience with surveys and why you're, and so you're, you're bringing that question up. And I, I, the point that I'm getting at is that we can scale that survey on our drawings at whatever scale we need it to be.
Okay. So then the remainder of it's going to be 40 scale of two-foot contours, which, and I'm assuming that's all the, the wider.
The large slope area, in order to be able to read it, we have to, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Hussey. Mr. Foley?
Okay, layman terms. I don't know, 40-foot scale, this concept and that concept. My thing is that, my concern, you know, we have on here that you're doing a phase one and a community outreach. Are you going to listen to the community outreach before you even come up with, you know, what phases to get their perspective? Because I know some of the community outreach is being less aggressive on their properties, evasive on their properties, means to start the path on the other side of the water tower instead of behind somebody's neighborhood. Because I'm worried about their property value, their rights to privacy and everything else, because, you know, they're going to have people walking up and down. And if we're safe to do as far away from the homes as possible, are you going to be listening to the community first before you, you know, come up with these drawings or are you going to implement that?
So the answer to your question, the short answer is yes. I'll, I'll give you a, a quick background on that. So we do designs for park, recreation facilities all throughout California. And I also do a great deal of work on private development, housing, community tracks, retail centers. We do a, a lot of different public and private types of projects. And in every single, every single project we do, there is concern from the community. And in order to be successful, we have to listen to that concern. You know, I did a, a project for a city on a beach and folks were concerned about trails being installed too close to condominiums. I'm well aware of, of concerns for folks. We're going to have, you know, we have a, a great deal of slope to contend with and, and I know we've got community down below. So we would expect that we're going to have a lot of interest in the project when we do the community meetings. And my job is not to impose design on the community, but to listen to the community and, and design it as best we can to meet the needs of, of those that are, the stakeholders that are concerned. So it's something we deal with on every project we work with and we'll be certainly doing it here.
All right, thank you.
How do you go about your public outreach?
So our public outreach ranges varies. We've, we've done We've done bilingual sessions. We've done web-based survey-type sessions with agencies or cities. You know, on this project, we were kind of framing this up to... There's already been some work done by a consulting firm that established the project. And I think that's what was used to garner the... To obtain the grant. And so we would use that as our starting point, so we could look at, you know, talk to the community about, here's what was done. We will certainly need to look at that concept and adjust it based on the survey. So there's an idea, a sketch that's been published presumably, and we'll use that as our base. And then we would meet in a room, not necessarily the chambers, but somewhere where I can... We can talk with the community, elicit their input. We've... In some projects, we'll... Let's just say it's a smaller scale of stakeholders. We're not expecting thousands of folks to have private input, but maybe hundreds. We'll do a survey within that meeting. It's something that some folks don't like to get in front of the public, and so we'll have something they can fill out and turn in. Or web-based type information where folks can review it, see it privately in their home, that sort of thing. So we've approached it many different ways. But I think for your project, we would start with that community-based meeting where we'd meet face-to-face with folks, talk about the project, hear their concerns, and go through the... All the opportunities and constraints that the project has, you know.
And would your staff be the ones to notify the residents of the meeting?
So generally, we do that in conjunction, in concert with the city. So there's either a mailing list and a way to notify folks that you're having that community meeting. Again, it could be web-based. Generally, we're not the lead on that simply because we don't have that access to who those stakeholders might be.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Allen.
How big is the sphere of influence for this park? Are we making it? I mean, what neighbors are we taking into consideration? Just Cardinal Street or the Avocata Grove?
No, actually, if we were to do the noticing, we would notice probably 1,000 feet around the property. That's a minimum impact.
Even though there's a road and a wall and all that between the, you know...
Yeah, but we would notice... Ms. Malini can help. We would notice all of Observation and those cul-de-sacs in the area, and then going down also toward the Lark area, down Van Buren. Because they would be the people that would be impacted.
All right. Thank you.
Any further questions of staff? Right. We'll open it up to the public. Are there requests to speak? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Foley. Our first speaker is Rebecca Olivaria. Would you like us to bring you a microphone? Would you like us to bring you a microphone? Or are you okay to come down?
No, I'm okay.
Okay. I know that feeling.
My name is Rebecca Olivaria, and I live on Cardinal, corner of Observation and Cardinal. For the past six months, we've heard scuttlebutt about a park being built there, and we've called and tried to get information. And we're told that, you know, we'd get back to you about what's going to happen. If it wasn't for 92313, we wouldn't know about this meeting because we weren't really informed. Now, I know this probably isn't the appropriate time to state my concerns, but I think that it's not right that the city can just arbitrarily make these plans and not inform the people that are really going to be affected by this park. I don't know how many people are aware of the fact that that area is... There's a drainage ditch, and when that initially was put in, and the contractor, or actually the city, asked if we would kind of keep an eye on people if they were going to not inhabit, but abuse this trail or this area. And over the years, I have called the Sheriff's Department about people that are trying to build bike trails and are out there target shooting and just different things. But my concern is that if you build a restroom, a bathroom, whatever you want to call it, and a parking lot for 20 cars, that is going to give people the opportunity to park their cars, have a gathering of different people. On 92323 today, there was a posting of garbage being just, you know, left at a site. Who's going to police this? Is there going to be... Are there going to be gates? Is it going to be just... Oh, okay. Anyway, as I mentioned, I don't think this is the appropriate time to really bring up these concerns, but I do want to make our feelings known, because I don't think I'm the only one in Grand Terrace that feels that this is really not viable in how it was presented initially. Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for waiting all this time to be here and speak, and I hope that you stay engaged during the design process. Our next speaker is Karen Romano.
Hi, Karen Romano, Finch Street. So my house is at the end of Finch, and the trail is being proposed to go directly behind my house. And I have a lot of safety concerns. There are a lot of... There's a lot of wildlife up there. Has there been an environmental impact study done? Do we know how the environment will be impacted? Has there been a geological survey done? There's huge boulders hanging on the edge of that mountain overlooking my house. If we go up there with any kind of equipment, is that going to be disturbed? Is my house going to be in jeopardy? So those are some concerns that I have, just about the project in general. I'm also worried about a fire hazard. I mean, now it's green, but in the summer, it's not. And if we're inviting people to go up and wander around, we'll ask them to stay on the trail, but we all know that they won't. And, you know, will they be smoking? Will they have fireworks? Does it happen now? Occasionally, rarely. But if we're inviting the public to come up, I feel that that's really opening up the gate for a lot of fire hazard. And the residents in my neighborhood, we barely get homeowners insurance now because of the fire hazard. So I can just imagine, if the insurance companies learn that there will be people now walking around invited, it, you know, it could definitely have a negative impact on us. So these are some things that I'm concerned about. I know I speak for a lot of my neighbors who aren't here right now. We are all worried that, you know, just a lot of safety issues. What if someone gets hurt up there? I own a parcel of property behind my house, right up to where you're proposing the park. What if someone enters my property and gets hurt? Who's liable? Am I now liable? So we have some concerns. Parking, you know, you'll close the gates, but that doesn't always stop people. Will they then park on the streets and walk up? Will there be any kind of guard? I can't imagine we could afford that. So these are some things that we're worried about, that we want you to consider. You know, I know that having parks is a lovely thing in a town, but, you know, does it have to be where it's going to so negatively impact people's properties? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for waiting all this time to speak. I appreciate you sharing your concerns with us and hope that you'll stay engaged during the process. Any other requests to speak for us?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. So we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for deliberation and consideration of a motion.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the contract with Hirsion Associates in the amount of $145,510 for design services of Phase One, subject to the City Attorney and City Manager's approval. I need to read all this, don't I?
Number two and three.
Yeah. Approve the appropriation in the amount of $145,510 from the Parks Fund fund balance for the contract with Hirsion Associates, and authorize the City Manager to execute the contract and to make any amendments necessary to complete the project.
And I will second.
All right. So I have a motion by Councilmember Allen and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Wilson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
Thank you. Mr. Foley, congratulations. And you've heard the tip of the iceberg of the residents' concerns, so you know you have your work cut out for you in making sure that there's something that you can do to alleviate these concerns. All right. Thank you very much. We will move to item 10, which is an update on the successor agency's 2011 tax allocation bonds. Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager. This staff report supports City Council Goal Number One, ensuring our fiscal viability through the continuous monitoring of revenue receipts and expenditure disbursements against approved budget appropriations. So redevelopment dissolution back in 2011 restricted the use of the agency's bond proceeds. A few years later, Senate Bill 107 was approved and removed certain restrictions on those bonds issued. So after the successor agency complied with those requirements, the Department of Finance authorized us to use bond proceeds up to 20%, less any prior approved expenditures from the actual proceeds. So to summarize, basically, our 5% distribution was about $289,000, and our remaining 15% that we requested was a little over $2 million. So what we should have been authorized to use, again, was 2.3 million. What I've done was just provide the summary of how we've actually allocated that 2.3. So to date, completed projects was about $443,000, giving us a balance of 1.8 in December. During our December meeting, City Council approved two more projects, bringing that revised fund balance to a little... Not fund balance, revised bond proceeds balance to a little under 1.2 million. City Council then also approved these priority projects, leaving a net of $63,000. So that is actually how the 2.3 million has been allocated. Again, so a reminder, what we requested at the time for our remaining 15% was $2 million and change. Now, when they calculated our 15%, they took both tax allocation bonds A and B, and based on the way the law was written, because they're allocating 20% to us, that's what was authorized, the maximum that they could use to deface our debt service was 80%. So if we got our total bond issue at 20.8 million, less discounts and the required reserve, the proceeds that had we been able to use would have been 18.5 million. Now, since SB 107 authorized us 20% to use, the maximum amount the DOF can use to deface the bonds or to pay for our debt service was 80%, which is 14.8 million. When we submitted our last and final romps, one of the requirements is actually to submit our cash balance as of that date. So when they were reviewing this in 2018, because these bonds have been earning interest, we have not been expending that, total we had at the time was 17.6 million. Less what they can only use to deface, we had that extra 2.8 million. So we deducted the $2,026 that we knew we requested, and this is the explanation that the Department of Finance gave us, because they can only use 80%. The balance can be eligible for us to spend. As City Council is known, we actually transferred all the money, so the $830,000 is sitting in the general fund. And so this is the calculation, and they have verified that, yes, it is eligible for spending. So based on that explanation, what we need to look at is evaluate the tax implications. If City Council remembers back in December, when we invited our financial advisor over 2011 AR tax-exempt bonds, which means they should have been expended within three years of their issue, but because of redevelopment dissolution, we were unable to do so. At any point, as he had mentioned, the IRS may come and impose either interest on that income or a penalty. At this time, our legal counsel is going to make that determination. So when we come back at the next City Council meeting to identify proposed projects, we will also be coming back with the confirming any tax implications, if any. This concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions City Council may have.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Fortune. Are there questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Allen.
So am I correct in understanding that we're not allowed to use the 80% to deface the bonds, right? But there are bills coming before the legislature this session that will allow us the possibility to use those bond proceeds. So are we somehow monitoring, following... Are we going to be able to... What are the opportunities for that to happen?
Yes. The City Manager has informed us, and we are looking into that. We've mentioned that our financial advisor and our legal counsel is also looking into that future legislation. As we get more detailed information, we will be coming back to City Council and explaining that. And should they decide... At this time, City Council has approved that we actually move forward with defeating and refunding the bonds. If legislation, as you have mentioned, that even the City Manager has confirmed, is going to actually give us a chance to use those bonds, we will be coming back to City Council with that information.
Even though we're over the three-year limit, would they make a way for it to happen?
The three-year limit imposed as far as tax exemption, that's imposed by the IRS. And they're a different entity from the state of California.
Oh, okay.
So they need to decide if they're going to, yeah, waive that.
Okay.
Yeah, exemption.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robles.
I guess I'm wondering what future legislation, because as far as these funds, there was a landmark case on it that I don't see how you can go back and change. So I don't know what you guys are talking about.
Well, like we said, Mayor Robles, we're going to look into that, and whatever the outcome is, we're going to provide City Council with a status.
All right. Any further questions of staff at this time? All right. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you. So this is a receiving file, and we should probably vote to receive and file, so please vote.
Madam Mayor, I recommend that we receive and file this report.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Allen.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem Wilson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
Thank you. Item number 11, consideration and discussion of procedures for City Council, future agenda requests. Mr. Adrian Guerrero, City Attorney.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item supports one of our core values of open and inclusive government, mutual respect, and a positive and productive work environment. So tonight's item is, how do council members request an agenda item be placed on the agenda? I present this with... I present this with two goals in mind. First, an issue that came up earlier, transparency, making sure that our, our actions are heard by the public and the public is aware of the final actions we take. The second goal is in support of our 2030 Vision Plan. In our governance section, we provide if more than one hour of staff time will be required to complete the task or project, the item will be agendized to ask the city council if time should be spent on preparing a report on the proposed item. Generally, all staff reports, staff takes time to write it, research it, and usually it takes longer than an hour. So, for that reason, I have proposed some options for the council to consider to ensure that the council has an opportunity to determine which item should come before the council. What does this mean? It means, number one, that the council must be informed of the request and provide approval in some fashion. Second, to provide the approval, this must occur at a regular meeting or a special meeting, so that the public is aware of the action. So, there is various items, various approaches to take. I am not going to present some procedures that I find in other cities, where a city council member, city, simply goes to the city manager, not at a meeting, and simply says, "I want something added to the agenda." City manager says, "Okay," and it goes on the agenda, because that would not be consistent with our 2030 Vision Plan. So, what I do in my staff report is identify four options that we can vary from, but here are the various options. One is requests are made under council communications. Many cities do this. I am not a proponent of that process, because if you think of what comes, comes under council communications, it's not clear if future agenda items would be covered under that subject matter. So, our residents wouldn't know that Councilmember Allen and Councilmember Robles would be requesting something under that topic. So, while that is a practice among many cities, I do not recommend it for transparency reasons. The second option is one that I do see in most cities, which is there is a future agenda item request section on the agenda, and a council member raises a, an item at the meeting saying, "Okay, well, you know what? I would like to bring back an item on," Councilmember Allen had requested doing a youth commission, for example. So, during that time, he can say, you know, "I'd like to bring something back on a youth commission. Is there any?" And he'll give a brief introduction. In Rancho Palos Verdes, which is another city where we represent, they actually put a time limit, a five-minute time limit on this whole discussion, so that it ensures that we're not getting into a full substantive discussion. We are simply doing an introduction, make sure the council's aware of the request, and if there's any objections, they're noted. Otherwise, the item will be brought back. That is a common practice, and that's a common practice I have in Locken Yadelfenridge, the other city I represent. Another item, which would be, in my opinion, most consistent with our 2030 Vision Plan, is to, again, have a future item, agenda item request on our agenda, but also have a motion and a second to actually approve the action as our 2030 Vision Plan suggests. But I'd actually go one step further. As Mayor McEnroe was indicating on the previous, previous item, having the most information so that we're completely transparent. In that case, I would suggest that a council member notify the city manager before the agenda is actually posted, and say, in Councilmember Allen's example, "Let's place an item for a youth commission." And in that case, city manager would actually put a blurb, a little descriptor, on the agenda under future agenda items, saying, "Councilmember Allen, youth commission, creation of youth commission." There will be no staff report, there will be no time dedicated to staff on that item, but the council is aware of the item, the public is aware of the item, and then Mr. Allen would present that request at the meeting under that item. Council could have a brief discussion on whether it's important enough or significant enough, or reasons why it doesn't make sense to bring it back. They can have that brief discussion, direct staff accordingly, and then it'll be brought back at a future meeting with the staff report. That, that is actually the recommendation that I am making. The fourth item is, is a unique procedure, and that's the Palo Alto method. In this, and I'm not going to go through each of the steps in the process, but in this case, two councilmembers actually get together, agree on a concept, and actually do the legwork of putting together a staff report that'll be brought back to the commission. I know each of you are, have busy lives, and to actually go through the legwork of having to do the research and then preparing a staff report, I, it, it's a good idea and, and it works definitely for Palo Alto, but I think I would not recommend it.
Do Palo Alto councilmembers have staff?
Yes, they do. And my, my guess is they probably rely a lot on staff in that process. And, and again, that kind of defeats the purpose of our one-hour limitation on, on staff time. So, those are various options that I've seen in, in other cities. My recommendation is, is option three, which is we identify a future agenda items request on the agenda. It would require a formal motion and a second from the council, but in addition to that, each council member would notify the city manager to place a descriptor on the agenda, and then no staff report, just a brief introduction, and get council approval to authorize staff to move forward on a staff report. That concludes my, my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Do we have questions? Councilmember Robles and then Councilmember Allen.
Well, I guess, because I didn't read in here anything about contacting the city manager ahead of time, because I'm thinking, I don't have a problem with that. I think that works too, but I also think that sometimes when city councilmembers are preparing their comments, things come to them that probably aren't going to come with them in the timeframe of that. You know, I was kind of just, would be more comfortable if someone could, you know, verbally say that they would like to see something on future agenda item, and that there have to be an affirmative second to that motion, and there's no discussion, because then, then we're awkwardly getting into deliberating.
Brown.
And, and we don't even have some, any substantial information.
Correct.
To have that discussion.
So, like the option number two that he described? You'd have a future agenda item section?
Okay, it's two, all right.
Well, there's, well, two and three are similar.
Yes.
Okay.
But three takes number two and says there's an advanced placement of an actual title.
Okay, because what I don't like about two was any, you know, objections from councilmember. I don't want to go into a passive.
Right.
Because it just seems like there's human nature for people to resist vocalizing, and three forces it. So, if we could.
Like a hybrid between two and three, is what you're suggesting?
Well, I don't know if it's a hybrid, because we don't have to, to say, I mean, I don't think, I think, well, we could do the discipline, yes, of, yeah, a hybrid of before, that, you know, it's on there, and, and there has to be a second, an affirmation.
Okay, so number three then, is what you're describing.
Mm-hmm.
Councilmember Allen.
At the end of every city council meeting, the mayor states that agenda items must be submitted 14 days prior to the meeting to get on the agenda.
Yes.
Can a resident get something put on the agenda?
That, that is possible. I'd ask the city manager for his thoughts.
Mr. City Manager.
There is a process, and we actually went through this whole process where a resident might make a recommendation or might, might suggest something. And then, I think the way the process works is there's a, an internal process on how, there's not a guarantee that I don't come back on the agenda, but the city clerk, do you have that process?
We, actually, a resident will submit it in writing what it is that they would like to, and then that is turned over to the city manager for discussion.
Okay, so we're not making the burden for a city council member any more owners than we would for a resident by having a city council member have to get a second from another person to get approval. We don't require a resident, do we require that of a resident? You know, do you, you know?
Well, I think what happens with the process that the city clerk outlined is that just because a resident submits something, doesn't mean that it's going to come back to the council. Through your conversations in this, in this process, once you make that recommend, once you make that recommendation, if you get a second by your colleagues, then a staff report will come back. Or an item will come back for consider.
So, under what circumstances would something submitted from a resident not be brought forward to an agenda?
Well, if it was an item that was completely off the, off the city's radar in terms of, maybe they wanted to establish a green zone or whatever, it, it, it would have to be something that's not consistent with your overall budget and operation plan. If it's consistent with your overall plan, you would have heard it here at the, at the council meeting.
But didn't we have something on a green zone?
Yeah.
Well, I'm talking about not a 40-acre, you, you had something clearly identified.
And a meal.
Any, any other questions? Councilmember Hussey.
So, option three, if we write down a notification, it's got to be done before we get our packet then, agenda packet, our request.
Correct, like the Wednesday before.
So, the week before.
Yes.
Or it could go on the next one.
Correct.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson.
I'd like to make a motion that we support the, well, he's characterizing, or the city attorney is characterizing as a number three, as our procedure.
Second. And, and to be clear, is that with the previous notification to the city manager? That it'd be, a descriptor be included?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Second.
All right, so a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Wilson, second by Councilmember Hussey. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McEnroe voting yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I may, for, we had a situation where.
Councilmember Robles.
Where a resident was coming and, and wanting things on the agenda. So, actually, what happened was there has to be an affirmation by city councilmembers that they want that on, on the agenda, you know, and it was kind of weird, because I couldn't get anything on the agenda, but, you know, it was becoming where a lot of these things this person wanted was stuff that I wanted on the agenda. So, actually, you know, through us, a resident can make that request, and we can place an item on them, but it still has to get another councilmember's affirmation, and that's how we can address that. So, we all have same equity and treatment.
Thank you very much for that discussion.
Pardon me, Madam Mayor, I apologize for the interruption. We had a public, a public comment on this item.
All right.
May I, may I approach?
I would, I would like, yes, I'd like to.
Madam Mayor, you may want to do a motion to reconsider. We said it, have the public comment, and then vote again.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McConnell. I appreciate your understanding. All right, Mr. Duffy, before I go to you, we have a special guest here today who's waited all this time so that he could introduce himself. This is Connie Levas Field Representative Edgar.
Castellan.
Castellan.
Hello, city council mayor, it's nice to meet you all. I want to introduce myself. I'm the new representative covering the city of Grand Terrace on behalf of Senator Connie Leva. So, I've met, I've met a few of you. I met with the mayor, had a good meeting with the mayor a couple of weeks ago, and I attended a coffee with the cop last week as well, met Senator, Councilman Allen, and then as well as, and as well as a city manager as well. So, I'm looking forward to meeting you all as, as time, as time goes on, and also want to update you all, a small update on the legislative priorities that you all relate to me. I relate it to our Sacramento office as well, so they would like to have direct contact with you all, most certainly with the city manager, so they will have a specific answers for you in regards to the specific legislative priorities that you inquired upon. So, if we, we'll probably talk more afterwards, but, yeah, it was, it was great being here in the city. It's a small, great community. I, I live in Heropa Valley right across, so it's, it reminds me a lot of my community as well, so it's great to be here, and I look forward to working with y'all and coming from here on out, so, thank you for having me.
Thank you, Mr. Castellan. Thank you so much for waiting and, and introducing yourself. All right, Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
City Manager Communications.
So, actually, this is the rock that Councilman Hussey had asked me to have, have, when he did his comments. Unfortunately, I sent an email to myself asking Deborah to upload this. I just discovered that, and so, he found that, and it went, we had a coffee with the cop and.
He stole your thunder, Councilman Hussey.
Just wanted to mention that the 12th Annual Walk on Blue Mountain is Sunday, March 3rd at 8:00 a.m. It begins, so you begin, walk the mountain no later than 10:45 to start, down by 12:30 p.m. So, we're looking, looking forward to having this event, rain or shine, we will be there, and it should be fun for all. And with, and then we also have one more activity. We have the, our annual blood drive at City Grand Terrace, and location in the community room on Wednesday, March 6, 2019, from 1:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. And I believe that we're going to have a presentation from the Red Cross at our next council meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. We do not have a closed session tonight, so we will adjourn to our next regular city council meeting to be held on Tuesday, February 26, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. Any requests to have an item placed on the future agenda? Well, we have a new process for that, and it must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with our council proceedings at this time. Thank you to those of you who stayed for the remainder of the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Phelps, for standing for appointment. Congratulations, Mr. Briggs, to your appointment. We look forward to your service, and we are adjourned.